First of all, for correspondence, we made a card, a thank you card from Adam and Mickey's wife and family for the gift, thanking us for the gifts that were sent to them on birth for their child, I think this is for our Christmas.
Yeah, well, and just, just a reminder for the board that anytime either somebody, a person or honor staff becomes a grandparent or they have a child, we send them a bib that has an Oriole, it says Future Oriole on it. So that's what he's referring to, so we, we always get those, so that's whenever there's a birth, we get an orange bib that says Future Oriole on it.
And then for donations report, Aaron has it up on, on the board, first of all, an annual scholarship donation we get every year from Mike and Vicki Jolka. Mike's been our lead attorney for legal staff for many years. Our hundred dollars, Tom and Sherry Benke and a matching thousand dollars from Kimberly Clark towards ventilation system, which is assuming kind of someone with a wrestling move.
We actually have two of them, they're in the wrestling right now, it's like an ionization, and it works phenomenal. We're actually putting them into the locker room, ones in the boys locker room, they're mobile, so we'll be able to put them in those areas to help with, with the health and the quality of the air. It's already made a huge difference.
Great, and then from the fabulous Kiwanis Club of Fond du Lac, a seventy-five dollar donation towards the ELC Child Development Days.
And this is a change that you're going to see in addition to, I'll provide for Steve, is that every month, any donation we get, I've talked with administrators and all the secretary staff, make sure we get it, that I get it, I see it, Maureen gets it, I write a thank you, and then we'll put it in here, this way it'll be part of the record, and then anybody who does donations will be recognized. This is a new thing that we're going to do, and I think to give the credit to the people who are really supporting us and going out on ways.
I believe by, by board policy, we have to allow the board to monitor any donations. That's all. Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is student council report.
This week is actually Spirit Week, our second Spirit Week this school year. Today was Beach Day, tomorrow is Holiday Day, Wednesday is Deckades Day, or Dress Up Like Your Teacher Day. Thursday is Fictional Fantasy Sci-Fi Character Day, and Friday is Class Color. This builds up to our Saturday Girls Basketball Game versus Amro, which is our Pinkout Night. Student Council will be raising money to support patient care and breast cancer treatments at St. Agnes Hospital, using the fifty-fifty rattle and eighty-three seconds, which is donating, um, change for eighty-three seconds, due to the statistics saying that every eighty-three seconds, a patient is diagnosed with breast cancer. Next week, Student Council will be selling Valentino grams, we'll be selling carnations Monday through Thursday and Friday, they will be delivered. Our Family Night in March is coming up, it is the early release day, the twelfth. We are setting up our committees already, and we'll be working to bring Family Night together. Student Council Convention will be taking place Sunday, April twenty-seventh to Monday, April twenty-eighth, at the Madison Backcourt Center.
Next item on the agenda is citizen input. At this time, I'll open up citizen input at seven eleven, any citizen wishing to be heard? Any citizen wishing to be heard? Final time, any citizen wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the citizen's input at seven twelve. Next item on our agenda is super times report, Mr. Sanino.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. A lot of exciting things in the report that aren't going to have action right now per se, but we'll look down the line a little bit to give you some information and set up some dates, because we have a lot of exciting things coming down the future. But before we do that, fortunate to have Coach Hevner here, and this has become something that's a staple, it seems, which is a great thing, and it's a great tradition, I think, every year, want to win on the field, but to have our girls varsity soccer team, also when Coach Hevner was with the boys, we had some recognition there too about an academic work. So I will turn it over to Coach Hevner, and also thank you for making me flexible and coming tonight.
Whatever. Besides doing my work always, I'm good. Yeah, this is the fifth year for the girls to receive the National Soccer Coaches Association of America Academic Award. In order for them to be eligible, the entire, all the players that are on the varsity roster have to average a three point two five grade point average for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Averaging it out, this year we were at a three point four six, which was good. There's two hundred and forty-one girls teams in the United States that are recognized for this award, so I think it's a phenomenal thing that we're in our fifth year, and this is our first year with Oakfield, so obviously it was their first year actually getting recognized as a, as a school. Unfortunately, those boys didn't make the cut this past year, so, but like I said, this is the fifth straight year for the girls. So really proud of them, I know a couple of people congratulated me, I have nothing to do with it except filling out some paperwork and sending it in and figuring out the grade point average, otherwise it's the faculty and the students who really need the congratulations for this. I'll have the secretary get over to you sometime soon.
If I could just add, it is a part of Donovan, because as we really watch from our coaches, he does stand top of the girls as far as expectations with academics, and he has emailed teachers in the past just to say, hey, what's going on? So the expectation is there, not only from staff, but also from our coach, so really appreciate his effort in not only filling up the paperwork, but you know, really setting that, that archive for the girls.
Tonight, filling out the paperwork's a big deal too, because Donovan looks for those opportunities so that the girls can be recognized for success, and that's something that we want our coaches to continue to do more and more and more, they're out there, but it takes time to dig through, to find, and then to follow through, so, well done, thank you very much. If you don't mind, would you just stick around just for a couple of minutes? I want to just, I'll tell you, since I haven't here, you might need to go, we might have longer, could you just comment about the success or questions that you have with when you've had a co-op with soccer, because we're going to have something on here for boys adding the springs? And we'd be down to twelve players if we did not co-op with the spring at Oakfield or Fond du Lac. So if you want to just comment a little bit about now with added numbers with the girls, or what you think about the co-ops with soccer?
My experience thus far with the co-ops have been really good, especially being one of the smaller schools in our, our conference, and then with the way that WIA is aligning tournaments and things, going into a season with twelve, thirteen players and playing twenty games just is not good for our students physically at all. When we brought Oakfield on at first, we had, we were up to one hundred and twenty-five, which gave our younger players opportunities to play some JV games, to get some time on the field in the high school setting before, what I like to say, throwing them to the wolves, to the big boys league in varsity, where some pretty serious damage could happen. So getting them those opportunities in smaller games was, was a big benefit to us. And with the girls now too, that gave us a lot of opportunities to get some of the younger girls into some slower paced games, which really worked out well. Again, it's just, it's tough in the soccer world, because there's just, in a smaller school, we just don't draw the numbers to have the JV opportunity, unless we do bring another school on, and I know it just seems every year now, numbers keep, definitely in soccer, numbers keep dwindling in every sport. And whatever we can do to keep our team numbers built up in order to give our younger players more opportunities to work their way into varsity rather than just throwing them in there, I think it's going to be more beneficial for them, just with success on the field and physically.
Thank you. All right. Next, this is an opportunity, we will be coming in March, as we look at finalizing some scheduling opportunities for our high school and the middle school, we're looking at time as being a piece of technology that'll help us be more efficient and effective in helping our students show growth in reading and math, and also have opportunities not only for remediation for students who need time so that they can focus and get caught up and learn some more of those basic skills, but also help to infuse a, if you will, old school name of a gifted and talented program, or something where we can enhance students, well, already showed that they have strengths, and they can start to do other things that can help them move on in their academic careers and show more growth and achievement. What we're going to hear now is from three of our administrators, first I want, Melanie is going to address us, at Friendship, they've done some changes within their day to really focus on language arts and reading, and also math, and how they've structured that a lot, also with this thing called Power Up Time. So Melanie can talk a little bit about that, kind of report on how things are going at Friendship. And then Adam and Samantha will be talking a little bit about something that they're, they're, they have been looking at with their staff, about how we can change and add time, the high school is probably the one building where there isn't that common play or that opportunity for remediation enhancement, so they had, they were looking at how can we make schedules fit so that we can do these things? The middle school share staff, so as we looked at that, that would have an impact if we want to keep those things safer that we have at the middle school with their team planning time, exploratories, things like that, so we could have those shared staffs. So what it came down to is Samantha and Adam and their staff, they've had a look at something where the times, those shared staff numbers can be similar, but yet it'll give flexibility so that the high school can add things, and also I know with the middle school, so that they can also look at how they can improve or do things differently. So before, I turn it over to Melanie, there's also, change is difficult, and we've had people wondering, well, why are we doing this? What's happening? Are things broken? Really, things aren't so much as broken, except for they can get better. And one thing I know of is that as we move forward with any plan, we will have a reason and goals of what we're going to do and then evaluate and look at, just like at Friendship, if we don't see improvements in reading and math with this infusion of this new Power Up Time, then we're going to have to say, well, was that really worthwhile? So those are, whatever we do, we're going to have some data to look at to make sure that what we're doing makes sense. So there's not going to be any votes, but what I, as I'm presenting, if you have any questions, want to kind of vet through some things, do that if you could, and then they're going to go back to their staffs and work on some things so that we could come in March with a presentation, add something to the board to act on about changing the schedule. So turn it over to Melanie.
This year, our master's schedule changed to incorporate a time that we call Power Up. It's a forty-minute stagger period across the day, and the reason that it's staggered is because our reading team members are participants in the design. So in that forty minutes, and right now it is exclusive to ELA, we are not looking at math at this point. This is our first year implementing math expressions, and at this point in time, students have been doing quite well with that transition from everyday math to math expressions, and we don't have enough data truly to work towards a model that's similar to our ELA. Balanced literacy, we have had for quite a number of years, we're not satisfied with our academic achievements in English Language Arts and in reading, and so our belief was that an opportunity to extend time during the day to really focus on improving the strategies that students have in order to support balanced literacy made the most sense. We had taken a couple of field trips to two other districts that used an intervention period, and we liked that intensity and focus, so that's what we're currently doing. We start out with our third graders and then move through each grade for forty minutes across the remainder of the day. The team, which is the grade level team plus the reading team, divide up the students. Right now, we're using strategy groups, which means that we focus on elemental pieces of reading, which are accuracy, fluency, comprehension. We also have an enrichment group for those students who are reading above grade level, and we have several groups with the reading team that are below grade level in reading, that we're trying to boost their skills to move them as far as we can towards being on grade level. So in that forty-minute period, depending upon which group it is, the focus of the instruction is going to be intense in that area. In the enrichment group, we just met today, in fact, in vertical teams, our vertical teams are each of those areas, the accuracy, fluency, comprehension, and enrichment, and we talked about, you know, what's been successful, what kinds of changes we would consider making, or you know, what do we look towards to make further improvement? My vertical team that I had discussion with was the enrichment group, and in each of those grade levels, except for first grade, well, except actually, except for third grade for enrichment, the teachers who are working with that group have done multiple activities, have done things like Reader's Theater, have had like logic activities, stretching understandings and stretching ability to reflect and to think more deeply. They've had conversations, deeper level conversations about text, reading beyond the text, understanding how to interpret what they've read, and then extend their thinking beyond the, what they see on the page. So there's been a lot of reading strategies focused upon, and also in conjunction with that, with the enrichment groups, a lot of writing, because they go hand in hand, a good reader is a good writer, or the writer of the reader. So we tried to incorporate both into that, that session. We're just now collecting all of our data, right now, we've had a couple of teachers and the reading team take a look at our Fanta's and Penal data, which is our reading data that, our reading assessment that helps us determine the growth over time for our students, and some of our students, according to our SLOW, which is our student learning objectives, some of our students have reached their SLOW, which is supposed to be reached at the end of the year, and they've reached it at midpoint. And we really believe that part of that success has to do with that extra forty minutes. Our balanced literacy timeframe is a hundred and twenty minutes, it's two hours of reading and writing, but this forty minutes is really intense, it's, it's looking through a narrow focus at really deepening that understanding in whichever group that they, they fall into.
Melanie, may I ask, when you say a hundred and twenty minutes, you're saying forty-nine minutes in addition?
Addition, forty minutes in addition.
And where are we taking that time from? I mean, you're looking at the day, it's packed already with these classes, now where are you taking that time from, or the other subjects?
Yeah, we reorganized our day and our master's schedule to make that work. Part of it was, we have a thirty-minute recess now, we used to have an additional fifteen, but that fifteen was more like twenty-five, and then we compacted, we compacted the schedule from the AM piece to the end of the day. We had more time previously where all of our students were involved in Oriole Way. We don't have that design, we incorporate, embed Oriole Way throughout the day. We still have our social skills groups that begin first thing in the morning, but we've reorganized in order to find the time to add that forty-minute period. It's a lot of work, teachers have done a lot, this is an additional plan that they have to put together, but I think, you know, you see how confident many of the students are and how proud they are of the progress that they've made. You know, some of them started to realize how behind they were in comparison to some of their peers, and many of them who are now catching up feel extremely positive about that opportunity to be on par with their peers. So you've seen lots of good success.
And we got to get better at reading, period. And it came down to fidelity, and you might hear about, well, there's not any recesses anymore in the morning afternoon. With that hundred and twenty minutes, it's not a hundred and twenty straight minutes of having your nose in a book. The teacher also monitors when they need breaks, and they can do different things, but like Melanie said, when you go out to recess in elementary school, it's not fifteen minutes, it's twenty-five to thirty, getting the shoes on and off, the transition calming down, so. We're interested to see how those numbers look as they come forward, so. I could tell it's made a difference in, in one of the people I know really well, my son, big time, big time. The amount of homework he has now, he has more homework than my sixth grader, my seventh grader, and which is good. He has a worksheet he needs to reach for twenty minutes, and it's, it's a lot, but it shows a lot of gains, and we're, we're asking more. And one of the schools that Melanie went to is Cheggwood, and they have, they have a similar population demographics that we have, and they see a lot, they, they are one of the best schools probably in the state with how they can get results from students, and those results will help them be more successful in the middle school as they move forward. All right, Adam.
It's a middle school, and we're kind of together, Samantha and I.
Do you mind if I just start, because I started before I can lead into.
Samantha, Samantha, would you start this off?
Thank you. So last year, we started as a staff to, you know, look at options with our schedule, just because of, there was concern in the beginning over RTI and response intervention, what are we going to have time for some of the tier-two and tier-three interventions that were needed for students? We have a lot of, you know, daily meetings after school, which we sort of call people if you name it, and so high school staff was struggling, where does this fit in? So we started to research, we went to Fort Washington, as we shared, and looked at their model, and it made a lot of sense to us. They had an eight, a true eight-period day, I will say, that they met Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and then Wednesday, Thursday, they did block days, one was even, one was odd, and then within their day, they had a forty-five, fifty-minute period that they used to, to do two things. One was for those students who were GT or, you know, really succeeding in some areas, they wanted to find ways to challenge or give them different opportunities. One of the things I remember is going into the choir room, and some students were working for a national contest in Acapulco. It was amazing for me to hear. Also then got to go into an English room where they were doing some reteaching in small groups. And the teachers that I took on that visit were both regular at special and at Colzers, and they said, hey, this makes a lot of sense. They're incorporating it within their day, they also saw a lot of benefits from the block, just on two days a week as far as doing different labs and really getting deeper discussions and going through them. There were also some, some groups that said, hey, you know what, whether we're FIAD, and we want to go to the golf course or bowling alley, or we are assigned class to an intersection lab, you know, this ninety-minute time really helps us that we're not, you know, trying to mix this up into two days. So we liked that model, and started to have discussions as a staff on, hey, what works? What are their options? Are they out there? You know, what, what will this solve for us? And some of the things we've struggled with, as Mr. Sanino said, is we don't have common planning time in our day. That has been one issue, we don't have time built in, in our day for either the Oriole Way or for responsive intervention like the middle school and elementary. So we, as a staff, continued discussions, and then really said, hey, you know what, we're ready, we really want to make this move. Then I went back to the drawing board and said, with the number of shared staff we have, we can't change our schedule at the high school and have the middle school be on a different schedule. It does not work with shared staff. When Adam then joined middle school, we had some of that same conversation, and as he got acclimated to scheduling in the wonderful world of scheduling process, then he began to look, and we met with, you know, is it possible at all? You know, can we have two completely different schedules? And we really kind of came to the conclusion, no. With those shared staff especially, for example, we remain hours one, two, and three with the shared staff that we share, you know, remembering that we share business, Spanish, tech ed, family consumer ed,
Music.
Music, art, I think that is all, that's a lot of people. So we, we talked about the fact that, you know what, we're going to have to essentially ask the middle school, hey, help us. You guys have some things in your schedule that are really working and doing well, and as a high school, we need to adjust our schedule, but we really can't, you know, given the shared staff. So with that, your turn.
Yeah, and definitely, as Samantha mentioned, it's been a really cool experience for me to kind of learn about, you know, middle school, high school scheduling, I've really lead Samantha and Aaron and my staff to kind of ask a lot of questions, trying to, to understand, you know, what, what their needs are, because, you know, maybe mostly an elementary guy, it's definitely a learning curve, but it's been a cool experience, I definitely, I've learned a lot going through this process. But like Aaron mentioned before too, I don't think our staff would say that our schedule was broken. I think there's a lot of great things within our schedule currently that, that we're doing that are great. I think we were going to look at our schedule anyways, and look for tweaks and things we might change, because that's what we're going to do every year, is look to get better and change things. So this is kind of again, as we start to look at how could our schedules work next year, it did become apparent that, hey, we're going to have to, you know, as a staff, middle school staff, we're going to have to kind of think globally here, whole district picture, and, and have a willingness to help, and I really commend our staff for, for being willing to help and, and knowing that, you know, there's some things the high school needs that, that all the other buildings have, and if we could do something to help with that, support that break, and if we can then still put some of the things that we love about our schedule or tweak some things and incorporate that into the schedule that we are looking to go with next year, that, that, you know, we can make that a positive thing for, for our kids as well, so. Yeah, I'm really excited about what we're, we've been talking about at the middle school level, and I know the high school's excited too. I think we, you know, we're looking at, you know, adding a little bit differently with our intervention time, we're going to try to incorporate that into our exploratories and have our exploratories be our enrichment, and have students working in interventions within exploratory time, so almost a, a little bit, almost like an elementary model, which, you know, RTI is pretty much a elementary framework, but it's kind of forced to go into that middle school and high school level because of the needs of students, so we're kind of taking that elementary also approach to intervention at the middle school level. I think we're going to have something pretty cool for kids and make great opportunities, and yeah, it's going to be a really cool thing, so.
We're going to, we're just going to continue, you know, working together, I did share with you a little bit ten minutes ago, it's like it wouldn't have made sense before, but two of the options that we're looking at leading towards the first one, where it would be very similar to the Fort Washington model. The difference is, in ours, we don't really have high school, middle school, a true eight-period day. We have a seven, a seven-period day because of the way that we count lunch, which is confusing. But, you know, that's where we kind of had to tweak how we, how we look at that, because it was a little bit easier for Fort Washington, they had a true eight-period day. It's definitely doable, started to gather some ideas from staff on, you know, what would reteaching look like, and then also on the flip end, you know, for our higher performing students, what would be some ways that we would challenge them or find activities that could be appropriate? And I think so far, you know, staff, some of the ideas, for example, that people shared is, you know, what about like a book club, CPR or first aid certification, some different fitness units for them, conversational Spanish, advanced grammar, music therapy, some of the store and cafe ideas that we are tossing around, true league intermuros from a sports perspective, production skills, you know, and those are just, you know, sampling of some of the things, because again, we don't want to just focus on, you know, reteaching for some of our students who are struggling, we also have opportunities for students who are succeeding.
One of the things I saw down at the board convention of Lodi and Marshall, I said Samantha and Adam, is once they get the schedule, how do you then make it so it's, so it's flexible and you can change? Because of the student, it has to be a reteaching of language arts and reading, and they only need that for a week or two weeks, or once they get caught up because they've been out, how do you schedule that, and how does that work so it's efficient? And so there's other ideas and options of, once you have that time that you did, how can you do it? And it's one of those things that'll grow. And one of the things that Samantha and Adam both told me, and the teachers who went on these visits, is there wasn't one staff who said, this is going to be so great, let's go ahead and switch, let's just do that. Probably the majority of them didn't want to do, or didn't, didn't think it kind of, okay, fine, we'll try it out. But Samantha said that all, and Adam, every staff that they talked about these schools, be it Lake Geneva Badger, be it at Fort Washington, really thought it was a great thing.
We'll switch back. We found that, you know, very all the way through that they said in the beginning, hey, I was leery of block days, hey, I was leery of, you know, what am I going to do? It's, you know, we've been very honest to staff that this enrichment for reteaching time is another project. It is, you know? And so part of our goal is to, you know, share with the board this month and look to next month for approval because then we want to make sure that we provide the support for staff to prepare to teach in that manner. So just, I think it's a really good opportunity for our kids and for our staff to focus on different ways to support reading, different ways to support some of the reteaching. You know, like Melanie was mentioning with some of the skills, you know, last week Liz Forbes and I met and she just finished math testing with the ALC students. And, you know, she's working at their scores and increasing their RIT scores. But, you know, some of her students are really struggling. And so it'd be, you know, great to continue to support that reteaching to really help them gain skills in ELA and math.
Is there an opportunity for, do I have to go back and forth? Is that, like if a kid's struggling one week, does it mean?
Yeah, I think the setup, you know, and I know Aaron saw a couple of different schools. What we really liked at Port Washington is they said essentially in summer, you know, you could take a list and really draft, you know, your kids to, because there are going to be kids who are struggling in English and in math, or maybe they're failing in all areas. And so obviously they can't be in four different places. So, you know, the suggestion was made to really focus on the ELA. And so far, the schools at least that we've talked to have said, especially in the beginning, don't flip flop every week, you know, set it at a quarter, set it at a semester, but allow that student the opportunity to come in their way out of it. The kids who are in more of the GT activities, it's really easy on a weekly basis to have them sign up on a Google Doc, you know, where they're going to be and do it that way. And that was something that Port Washington is moving to this year. So looking at ways, and those are a lot of the details that, you know, we'll make sure that are worked out from when the decision is made. Here's the final, you know, schedule until, you know, some time. And I'm sure it'll be a constant tweak next year. Hey, this is working or, okay, let's change this. But right now, our goal is if a student needs a reteaching, more than likely they would not be in there just for a week. It would be for a quarter.
If you're technically going from seven period day to eight period day, then are they going to add an additional class? Or is that time that I missed that, is that time going to be this intervention time?
Yeah. The way that we, one of the options, and when you look at it, Steve, I share with you, I think I should share this quickly here. Well, let me just go through. What it would look like is, so let's say in a block day Tuesday, first hour would be from 7:30 to 9:00. Third hour would be from 9:05 to 10:35. Then really half of your student body has to be in intervention and the other half has to be in lunch. And then they would flip flop. And then really, whether they have fifth or sixth hour class, doesn't, it doesn't matter. Everyone would be in class at that time. Adam and I talked about it. We just wouldn't change the names. Otherwise, I think people are so used to, I teach fifth hour, I teach sixth hour, I have this, you know, just keep it the same because it would be the same on three other days. They would have that class from 12:05 to 1:05. That's the one which with a seven period day. And then seventh hour on odd days would be 1:10 to 2:35. The suggestion with staff is because that fifth and sixth hour would be the only hours that you wouldn't have block to try to schedule, for example, music. You know, Jerry's like, you know, pick the band always tends to be sixth hour anyway. So, you know, I have band every day, no big deal. The other teachers, through the survey that I created on Google Form, had suggested, hey, you know what? Because fifth and sixth hour would have 120 minutes versus the others would have 90, could we possibly use 30 minutes on the second day to do some unique things? Maybe to focus on reading, maybe to, you know, people said, what about once a month calling a special meeting? For, hey, we've got key club, we've got student council. So trying to look at those options that way. Because yes, you're right. Otherwise, if we went to a true eight period day, we'd have to come back and look at increasing credits, teaching staff, you name it. So this was the solution.
One of the things I like too is that we, students get tapped for so many things after school. And it seems more and more kids aren't working or not want to be involved. And it seems that clubs sometimes take the hit because we only can do so many things. So if we see them, these co-curricular, these opportunities for kids to really make their learning a little bit more robust, if you will, if it's important, do it during the day. And if we can do it without sacrificing our achievement growth, be good.
And I'll probably just add too, I know Samantha touched on this, but I know our staff too, probably our biggest, you know, question mark right now is that block. Are those block days and, you know, how we, what are we going to do during that 90 minute time that we have that class? You know, what can we do for that chunk of time? So I know that, as I've heard from our staff, just like I know there's some concerns at the high school with that. And for me too, when we went on those visits, it was really interesting and I really focused on what those teachers were saying about it because, you know, I'm not going to be teaching the block. It's going to be our teachers doing that. And it was interesting that everyone had said the same thing and that didn't want to really do it, had those same questions. Oh gosh, what am I going to do? But everyone said I would not go back to teaching in that smaller class time just because the things I could do in that block have been so cool and so valuable to student learning, what I do in the classroom. So to me, that was pretty powerful. I was talking to my sister-in-law too this weekend, who teaches in Minnesota. And she was, teaches in the block, and it's the exact same thing. And she didn't want to do it at first. And now there's no way she'd go back because of just the success she's having and her kids are having.
One of the things, be very clear, this is not going to a block schedule like we used to have. This is the class still meet for a semester or for the entire year. Only difference is, is it's modified meaning that you'd have Wednesdays and Thursdays each day, half the classes meet for extended period of time. Otherwise, to teach out of regular week, all kids would see their teacher four times. And if you notice, our schedule next year is early releases on Friday, which will help us also make sure that this can be, fit in there. So that's one thing people might say, I remember the block, I have this. This is not that. And what teachers will be doing is preparing to teach one class a week in that block time. The other ones, the other three will be the same as what they have right now.
Samantha, a question on this. Being a parent and potentially looking at doing this, you know, what classes are potentially going to be the block? How do you calculate that in the flyer when you know what classes to pick? When you're going through these classes as a parent? And second question that, what are we doing to the parents, me being one of them, to educate me so that I know when I'm picking classes for Andrew, okay, math or English is going to be a block? Or is science is going to be a block? How do I know which ones are going to be a block or are they varying?
Both.
Yes, yeah. The way it is, John, let's say math, for example, because every class will be taught in the block.
Only one day is a block.
Well, two are, two are. But think of it this way. So if he has algebra on Monday, Tuesday, Friday, same as always, 52 minutes. If he has algebra second hour and on Wednesday, it is our even block day, he would have math for 90 minutes. On Thursday, he would not have math. And then back on Friday for the 52 minutes. That's what a modified block is. And there are quite a number of high schools that are looking at changing their schedules for varied reasons. You know, and I share this with Adam, putting on OSA. It's quite prevalent, a lot of these discussions. You know, and I think part of it is the RTI that people are struggling with. And then people are also, you know, looking at everything from their report card to reading to, you know, the list goes on as far as trying to meet the kids', you know, needs during that day. Because like Aaron said, you know, and probably a lot of your kids, I mean, they are busy every single day, so.
And then the second question was, how are we going to educate these parents? And you told me here, now we're looking at almost approving or coming forward next month in March, just saying, boy, we're coming to prove this. I think it's important that we get this message out to the parents because if they're, they may have concerns as, as you did probably when you went and visited. I mean, you got your answers when you went. These parents are going to think, well, what does that mean? They're going to think, the old block, oh boy, what did that mean? And what is it going to do to us? And I think it's very important that we get it out to the parents so they can understand. And then students, I mean, I think important now, the fact that, hey, we're looking at this. We don't know if we're going to do it because I think the students are key to listen to. If they're coming in here and parents, you know, obviously you're bringing recommendations, but there's other factors that come into play saying, boys, is this going to work? And I know there's always that concern, boy, do we do it or don't we do it? Is it best for us or not?
March, April, and May.
Yeah. I think John, it's your question to.
All those months that we would overwhelmingly get the information out, have sessions. Samantha would send things home, talk to parents almost.
But before approving it, I mean, I think if there's concerns, I would like to hear the concerns from the parents or students potentially prior to me approving it. I mean, or.
I would say my thing with the parents and students, the educators who are, they've looked into this in depth and have a lot of the answers. The parents aren't going to have the academic background or information and their concerns are going to be, they haven't visited, the schools are looked into it. So I think what I would say is, is the information's out, but if we're going to look for the students then, who also, I mean, I could tell you my daughter right now, she'll say, Dad, this class, I want to be in there for 90 minutes. I'm bored for 45. You know, so I mean, she's good, they'll have all these different opinions. So what you're saying is, is are we going to get input from all of our community and kids before we even look at doing this? Or are we going to educate them about why we're doing it and what it means?
I think educating because then you're going to get the input. I mean, when you educate people, they're going to give you input. The people that do care or have some concern are going to give you the input. I mean, if I look at, because I just got announced I'm at 7:21, really haven't had a good chance to look at it, which I will, because as a parent, I'm going to look at this, you know, obviously you gave multiple options and looking at this, you know, how does this fit, what does it do? And obviously you spent a lot of time. I appreciate you going through that. As a parent, we're going to, I'm going to look at it and then from a board member saying, okay, that works. And, you know, education, I mean, to me, getting stuff, I'm very analytical. I mean, I'll look at stuff and I'll tell you if I don't agree with something or if I have a different thought process. But I think the key is making sure people understand, saying, yep, we're changing our schedule, well, to what? So I think mainly my point was educating the people because then you can give input. People that do care will come back saying, wow, we're going to be doing this. Well, how is this going to work? The questions that we're asking, probably a Q and A. This question, the answer is this.
Oh, for sure. I can tell you unconditionally, the amount of information, like we do with everything else, the amount of information available to parents and everything will be there. The process that we want to do is to say, hey, let's talk to you about this right now. The staff's been working on this for quite a bit. We're going to ask them, come in, you know, in March, say, hey, you can put this for a vote to pass. And once we get that, then we're going to start to go out there and say, this is what we're doing. This is why we're doing it. This is how it's going to work. Because I think if we go the other way, we'll never do anything. I mean, as far as asking, you know, get out there, say, we're thinking about this, what do you think? And I don't know if people that are equipped to be able to answer that question except for on their own history when they were in school or on emotion. So, but we definitely, if that's like everything else, put out as much information and have frequently asked questions, new website and Alert Now, and even have times where we'll hold meetings after school for parents to come in.
And I think we felt, John, because I had shared this with the board in spring, you know, last year that we were looking at schedule to kind of give you guys the preface, okay, you know, things are coming. And I think, you know, like what Aaron is saying too, you know, we were upset with our report card this year as a high school. We were upset. And we also know that, you know, which maybe parents don't know, trying to do some of the reteaching, you know, that is necessary for kids, sometimes can't happen in 52 minutes. And trying to look at really tier one good teaching and continue that. And Adam and I have really had some discussions with our staff about that, like continue differentiation, continue, you know, what are you doing when it's not meeting a student? But we did not feel, like Aaron was saying, that we could go forward with parent and student informs and questions if we didn't inform the board first.
Well, I agree. What you just told me right there is perfect. I mean, you're telling exactly, you know, we're not satisfied with what's ours, which we're not. You just told exactly what the parents want to hear. This is why we're considering changing this because we need that more time. I mean, that makes sense. And that's all I'm saying is, hey, you're getting it out there. We're having trouble. This allows us an opportunity during the course of the school week, school day, to take your son or daughter and give them that extra attention that you need in a certain area. I agree with that. That's all I'm saying is just make sure they understand it.
Yep.
So we wanted you guys to have, you know, like, exactly what we're talking, have you have the knowledge first so as we move forward that you can be, you know, armed with that information. But what I do know is, and I've been in staff meetings, I've met with parents of many different things, people, the amount of work and stuff that goes into some of these things, like technology. I remember with our technology initiatives and what's happening, if people aren't involved with that process, then they get, they don't have the information or they come in, they have, they have questions or something about something. Be like asking me how I should fight a fire about the new process that you guys are going to use for organizing fire safety. I mean, you could ask me, but I really wouldn't know what I'm talking about all that much. But once you say, this is why we're doing exactly what you're saying and this is what it's going to do and this is how we're going to measure to see if it works and this is the data we're going to collect, and that's what we'll definitely put out there. And what you guys hear, which is great, we have parents on the board. If you're not hearing, you know, as we go forward, say, hey, you know, I wanted this, I didn't really get this information. Let's try to tweak that. We need that for sure.
You said we're deciding between two different styles or options? Would you make that decision, would you allow us to know before the vote? Or when, why you chose that way?
It'll be in the next week. We just have some little tweaks in that to talk about. And I did share with you, I'm going to see on your drive, a document that shows those two.
Okay.
And I'll share ours with you guys as well, probably after the meeting today.
Is that including a sample schedule, for example, just a mock schedule? I think visually that might help understand the Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday thing. All right, thanks. And that's, we look at time as technology. And how can we use it best to help students be effective and grow and achieve? So we're looking at how can we organize that to really also, I think another part that they talked at Samantha and Adam were talking about is to get kids to like school more. There's some students who can really take off and do great things if they had a chance to choose what they're going to do for 45 minutes of the day along with their parents. Because I know some parents aren't going to say, oh, my kid understands reading and math really well, so now they want to work out for another hour a day. Parents are going to have to also be okay with the decisions that their students make at school. And hopefully we can provide many opportunities to help our students that are finding success even, find even more success. All right, next, very, very exciting here. I'll turn this over to Samantha. And then I'd like to add a little bit because I think within the, and I'm just going to say this, but I think it's very exciting, within the next two years, I, maybe within the next year, I'm going to come to the board and talk about looking at getting a grant to start to look at charter schools. And we're really looking at two different types of charter schools. And we're going to have to learn a lot about what that means and how that works within our district. But one of them that kind of spurred this is this thing called Project Lead the Way, which is problem-based education with science, math, and engineering. And we're moving forward with this and Samantha will talk more about that. And then another one is this idea of owning a business and advertising and selling and marketing and cooking. We got a lot of really neat ideas. But once again, it's looking at how we can help all different students do well. And in a school district of 1,200 kids, we can provide a lot of opportunities for students. So I'll turn this over to Samantha. And we're very fortunate, I want to thank her and also Dixie for helping writing the grant as we move forward with Project Lead the Way.
Sure. This is just, you know, follow-up information we had shared with you that we had applied for the grant. So now it's jumping through and doing all their paperwork process, et cetera. But we have, hopefully you had a chance to take a look. That Aaron and Linda did a great job formatting our new course description booklet. You'll see Project Lead the Way in there and a couple of the classes that we were offering. The Project Lead the Way website, if you haven't had a chance. It really is, you know, a great one to kind of showcase a lot of this STEM education that is everywhere, the science, technology, engineering, and math. So the two classes that we are looking at starting with, and we're just going to, you know, take a look at numbers is the IED, Introduction to Engineer Design, and the POE, Principles of Engineering. Principles of Engineering can actually also be taught by a science teacher. And some districts are choosing to have that as science credit. Otherwise, you can just have it as elective credit. The IED class does need to have a 220 license or a tech ed teacher needs to teach that. So we're, thank you, Aaron, for bringing those up. So we're looking, Project Lead the Way requires you to teach one of these foundation courses in the beginning. And then they have a lot of opt suits from them. One that we are looking at in the future after these two is the digital electronics, which is in there. This is also a class. It's a very rigorous course, but it can be taught by a math teacher. Jeff Strax has already put his hook in meat to say, hey, maybe, maybe me, you know, would love to. But it's the same as the POE that you can use it as a math credit or it can be an elective credit. So we are looking at, you know, obviously we still need to hire a, or bring in someone for the tech ed position. But Aaron and I have something in the works regarding that.
Blow your mind. It's going to be cool.
And then we will look at sending one, possibly two people to the two-week Project Lead the Way training that's held at MSOE this summer. That's quite extensive training, but, you know... Um, that's quite extensive training, but, you know, everyone says it, it's, it's top-notch, it's rigorous, but it's gonna help prepare them to teach these two courses. Um, have great support so far from Project Lead the Way and Tanya Kilpatrick, who is our go-to person from CISA. So, um, we've just kind of begun with, with those stages and, and are really excited to, to have this program out at our schools. I think like, um, Aaron had also mentioned in, in the board report, um, Project Lead the Way is just taking off, um, in our, our state, in our nation and, um, now with the addition of some of the elementary modules and programs that they offer, um, it's just like a great experience.
I have two teachers, Tammy Redeman and Judy in QF Elementary, fourth grade, that, um, I just signed, uh, on Friday and sent it in that to pilot Project Lead the Way in fourth grade. So, and from fourth grade then, and, and, and those grade levels, you go from matter and robotics, and Vex Robotics has worked in there also, all the way from kindergarten, having a strand of problem, that Project Lead the Way is that problem-based education of science, math, um, engineering and technology. And then having that go all the way then from fourth grade out and then also the middle school, they also have modules also for Project Lead the Way that will get kids very, very focused on that. So when you get to high school, now we have this opportunity for students to find a lot of success. Not just doing math problems or just doing science, but doing it all together, including literacy. When I was at, um, the board convention, ran into Project Lead the Way, they had a booth set up and Harlan Arrow had a cool, uh, really great group of kids and they're actually going to, I'm, I'm challenging them and what they give me their information, give it to Samantha, they've been in Project Lead the Way for five years. And, um, what they're gonna do is help us design our Project Lead the Way lab, which is gonna be right, the, the, the computer lab off of the library. We're gonna rip that apart, keep some computers in a bank, but get round tables in, movable boards, but that's gonna be that Project Lead the Way or the problem-solving lab that can be not only used for Project Lead the Way, but also for other classes. Opportunity. So, this is, um, what we see here is this is a, a change of the way that we go about doing things and giving kids opportunities. So, should be very exciting.
In the course book, I see under Introduction for Engineering Design, you're talking about, uh, three D modeling and some three D modeling software. Is the school, one three D modeling software that's current?
No.
No, we have to purchase a three D printer. Um, so we've gotten some of the specs from the Antioch, for example. Um, so that's one of the things that we will need to purchase. They're about twenty-two, twenty-four hundred dollars.
And we're getting the computers, we're getting the computers, Project Lead the Way.
To the grant.
Correct. They'll cover part of it, but we also have tech, now we do have money that we spend on technology and infrastructure, we'll just utilize it here. And what we do create for Project Lead the Way can be utilized for many different things also. But we need to get some more high-powered computers that can run this software. Um, and then have like as Sam said, some ancillary, uh, things that also like that three D printer and things. So that students can be successful. With Vex Robotics kits, as we look at the elementary school, we were fortunate to get twenty of them donated by UW Oshkosh at Castefaluna, who's our, our coach there, helped out. So, this is just to start, but what I'm really excited about this, it's gonna force us and kick us to keep getting better and better to meet this need, this, this incredible need for our students to have as they move forward. Cause this is where a lot of jobs are. A lot of the well-paying jobs and careers and currently we don't have anything that helps funnel students to understand what this process is all about. It's not just math and science, it's that engineering and the problems to solve.
Ryan and I actually went to a breakout session at the convention two weeks ago on Project Lead the Way. And it was mostly offered by schools that had, were large enough where they took Project Lead the Way up a standard gap and they activated some on the building. So, uh, I, I was interested to see how this was gonna roll out initially. And I'm pleased to see these two categories here. One of the things that I wanted to clear on was, is this, are these electives? Or will these classes also contain a corporate or, or, uh, science?
We are not gonna go that direction right now. Um, we have three credits in math, we have three credits in science. You know, so some districts are actually using this to make their third credit of science and math. We may in the future head to that, but I think right now we want to see, you know, what's, what are our students body in response to this? You know, for example, if the IED class runs next year and the POE does not, well then, having, having to have the two-twenty license, the tech ed license for the IED, it's gonna remain, you know, a tech ed, elective class. No matter what, the opportunities for kids as far as the dual credits or opportunities to share with MSOE, you name it, are there. Whether it is on their transcript as an elective or math or science. Um, those are questions we ask. I think smaller schools, like you, like you had said, um, have run into sometimes, you know, the licensing issue as far as, you know, who can teach what. Um, when I asked the question to both Greg, who's from Project Lead the Way and Tanya, hey, are more districts going that direction and saying, hey, this is gonna be a math credit, this is gonna be a science credit? You know, their, their answer to me is, it, it really is dependent on the school, it's kind of all of the board. Um, so I feel, you know, we feel comfortable with our three credits that we have and the career pathways for math and science. But I think right now, starting, you know, starting small, we're gonna remain, these are elective courses. But like many of our other classes, you know, here's the benefits, you know, here's the, um, I don't want the articulation, but the opportunities for dual credits.
Walkie School of Engineering, that sort of credits.
And many, many others.
But, one other thing too is if we have ninth and tenth graders take, that's what we're hoping, so, cause that's gonna be what's gonna help grow the program. They're coming into math either in geometry and math algebra or algebra. And, um, I think, I think Samantha and the, the staff is doing, I think at this time to have, say, wave a math course at that time would cause a huge disadvantage to those students. Where they would have a gap then and then have a year off or say, just more of the traditional math. So, as time goes on, I think that dual credit, we'd have to look at, but that's another thing that we want the younger students take, to take this. But this isn't in lieu of learning algebra, geometry or math algebra. This is something that's more the application of those principles, as you were.
When we were in that breakout session, um, uh, this was a K through five school, Kenosha. And I couldn't have said more on the demand, this was, all my notes are on my phone, as I have.
That, that elementary school, one is one that they highly recommended us to visit. That's, that's phenomenal.
You know, looking at it, that's, I've been hearing about it, but this is the most information we got from that Aaron's, Aaron recommended that we go because of this. And we're starting it out in, uh, high school. And they highly recommend you start it out in, in eighth, second, third, I mean, that's what they are. You know, and get your kids, their interest, so they take it out. I mean, or give a fear that, it may not a fear, but what if nobody takes it? Cause they're, I mean, what if you don't have enough kids to run the class, then, then we're, I mean, I don't, I see we're trickling it down to, uh, ALC or FLC. So, would you do, if you don't have a demand here, would we push it more there? Or?
Well, the, the elementary programs, and I know Kenosha has been the, um, school surprisingly, Kenosha, that, you know, has done this for a couple of years, but really otherwise their elementary program is very new. Um, it has been, you know, high school and then they added middle school. Um, so I wouldn't say that, you know, they strongly recommend you start out in, in elementary. We didn't hear that.
Well, they, they probably said that they're an elementary school.
But they're saying that, yeah.
I understand that.
Um, what we're trying as well is our seventh grade rotation class that we have at the middle school. Um, our, our hope is that's going to change, you know, depending on who we're able to get in this position to the seventh grade, it's called a gateway class through, um, Project Lead the Way. Because that, my belief is, you know, even if we didn't have elementary, which is awesome, but that's kind of your starter program, you know? And the way that we use our exploratory classes right now are for kids to get in touch of, you know, music and arts and family and consumer rights. And then that, that helps them. We have our eighth grade orientation night. You know, hey, they kind of, you know, see the dog and pony show a little bit again and then they, they make their choices. Well, if they have seventh grade, Project Lead the Way exploratory, they're going to be more exposed to some of that problem solving. Hey, what do I like? What, you know, do I have a little bit better understanding of engineering? Then, you know, I think like any program, you know, we did talk about it at eighth grade orientation night, um, and, and shared with parents and they were all given one of the Project Lead the Way brochures, um, to kind of spur the interest. We had several comments at night. Um, same as upper bound, you know, we had upper bound, um, at our eighth grade orientation night. I think it is, you know, our, our hope is that we are, are putting it out and marketing right, um, it's on our website. We had a few questions from parents. Um, you know, Tom has talked about it. I think what's probably the only thing that's difficult right now is not having, um, that, that other new teacher in there to really also help with the marketing on this. Um, but I did ask the question, because of being a small school, I said, hey guys, what do we do? This is a three-year grant. So what happens in March or April if I do have three kids who sign up for the IED? Can I hold my grant out for a year? Yes, I can. So, you know, trying to keep all the cards. My hope is that we don't. My hope is that I have to come back to you guys and say, hey, both these classes are full, I need more money. I, I'd love to be able to do that.
I don't have any suggestion.
You'd say, right, yes, Pete?
We, I know we don't have a lot of people throwing money at us, there are a lot of businesses out here. But they said, contact your businesses, your manufacturing, uh, we need some equipment. Did some of the regional tools guys to see it?
Well, Aaron, Aaron's done a, a great job because Tom Kaiser could put together a plan, um, for us. And so Aaron's really, you know, worked with him to put things out there. Um, for just Project Lead the Way, uh, we had a letter of support from Pete Menosky and, and Menosky, cause he was aware, he wasn't asking for the money at that time. Um, and then also Jim Cleveland through the Chamber of Commerce wrote us a letter of support for this grant. So, they know and I contacted them to let them know that we, we've, um, earned the grant. You know, the hope is again, too, with, um, you know, kind of putting this out there and what Aaron is sharing and, and businesses and then also having that right person in there that, you know, will continue to get some, get some support.
I keep hearing that these, these manufacturing businesses, what do you want? Their job market is depleting, they want kids to get interest at all. Start the interest here, maybe they're willing to help out.
The Association of Commerce and there's two groups. There was the, the business group and the, the education group. And then there was another group that was founded around that exact idea of the changing workplace and we have these shortages in, in engineering and manufacturing. And so these two groups are working and I'm, I was in both of them, but now they're merged together. And one of the things when they got merged together and the leader of the group is the head of, or is a, a owner of Condex. His name escapes me right now, one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet. The more I think about it, hardly remember. But he's the one who's chairing this. And they actually have commitments from manufacturing committee of six hundred thousand dollars to help with these goals of moving engineering and manufacturing forward. How's that money gonna get spent? Um, I think a part of how that money can get spent is to support schools that are doing this, Final Act, La Mirada North Final Act, Rosedale Brandon, any way that we can to help support those things. So that's what, that's, that's, uh, I think gonna be a good source of, of, of income that, that are working together in the community. So, which is all new, but we're getting on, we're getting our, our feet on the ground and going. One thing Samantha had said and I said this all, I mean this with probably more than I can ever say is that people are your number one commodity, it's the right people. And we're really looking to find that right person to be, you'll hear a two-twenty license, but it's a technical, technical education position. Well, then Jim Longo was in it and Tom is in. We need to find that right person. Right now there's eleven of them graduating from Stout and from, um,
Platteville.
Platteville, plus the market out there, it's all like NFL free agency. And we don't even know if they're good. I mean, just cause they got the license, I mean, they're good. But we're going to plan B and I'm excited to share that with you probably in a couple of weeks. Um, then I think that will put us in a great place to have a right person in there. So.
Do you want me to add any comments for charter?
No, we'll get that, enough we got, we threw enough at. One thing we will do is I'm gonna talk with, remember the PEP grant that we have, this is the last year of that. I'll be recalling Kevin DeKramer at CISA six, he's the one who helped us write that. And you can, um, get grants to help, to fund research to look at charters, to plan them. Um, so I'm gonna talk to him to find out what that would be. So as we go to explore, maybe doing some charter schools within our, within our schools, the school district or Final Act. Um, we, it's a, it's a planning process, but we could get the funds that are out there to help stimulate that conversation. Cause we now have teachers on board. That's the biggest thing too, is having Tammy and Judy at the, or Judy at the elementary. And the more people that want to do this, then that's how it runs. So. Alright, thank you. Moving on. Um, board convention. I think we talked quite a bit about the board convention already. Um, Ryan and Steve, Pete, myself and Maria went. Um, I'll just share, I thought the speakers were excellent. Picked up a lot of great information and, uh, you guys wanna share anything?
Went to a breakout session of, uh, Project Lead the Way, I thought it's very interesting. Also went to one on self-funding your insurance. You know, I know it's high down the road a little bit, but it sounds something, like there's some money to be saved there. Uh, definitely some opportunities. Um, that was another good one. I went to one on common court again. And got about the same amount of information I had before I even went into there, but it's, I mean, it's just different. Um, I keep thinking I learned all this stuff from what they're gonna tell me and I think spoke with Aaron and said, just read about it. He was, we're more just by reading it, looking at the standards and I've been doing that. Um, that's definitely interesting. Um, and the legislation, legislative update was definitely interesting. A lot of things going on. Um, so, speakers were great, good information. So, went and went.
Yeah, as a new board member, I thought it was, uh, an excellent opportunity to, to gain better insight in a number of, number of topics that went to Project Lead the Way issue. Um, I went to a couple of option sessions on finance, um, budgeting and how it works and equalized aid formula and all those terms that we toss around in budget time, which were, are mostly confusing. At least they were. And so, um, so, you know, the, the first session I went into, they, they asked whether or not North Fondalac was a tertiary, uh, positive or negative funded school. And I didn't know the answer to that. I, I didn't know. Uh, so it was, as a new board member, I would, I would highly recommend to, uh, to, to, to consider going to that if they can pry the tongue away from, from their regular job. But, uh, uh, those were beneficial and, uh, I would probably look forward to going to the next year.
Yeah, I think again, it was, it's something that is very valuable for board members. So, if nothing else to recharge and, you know, refocus on our role as, that rules as board members. Um, one of the things that I do as a delegate, this attended delegate assembly and just a short report on that. As we had talked about last month and we were, one of us, well, in our opinions on the resolutions, they all passed. Overwhelming. It was probably the fastest one that I, I think I've had eighteen or nineteen of them now and it, it sped by. Every once in a while, somebody would get up and talk against one of the resolutions and then you vote and it passed three hundred twenty-five to seven or something like that. So, you know, so the process, the democratic process was there, people had a chance from other districts to, to speak. Um, really, you know, the thing that took the most time was probably the one you expect the least, which was safety belts on school buses. You know, I, it ended up, the new one was different from what our current practice is, it was requiring, uh, safety belts. But it asked for new, uh, new buses going forward, but then there was amendments to that that wanted all buses and dispatches. Ended up failing, which I think was, was improper, which means it would leave things the same as far as lobbying policy and all that. And I think the overriding feeling there was we've had school buses for eighty-plus years without school, without seat belts and there's a reason for that. And some people that were involved in traffic saving and that. And also our board members would speak or did speak and talk about the compartment that the seats provide and, and, you know, it's obviously something that the industry has not ignored over the years. So, so anyway, that, that was just kind of curious to me that it had so much discussion, so much time. But otherwise, yeah, everything went just as expected. The resolutions generally support using school boards and what we want to see, the WSP lobbying for us down there. So, but in other words too, I think the speakers this year were, again, great. I think there was a theme that I kind of noticed about, you know, how important passion and engagement are with the students. And really, um, focused on the responsibility of, of the teacher to the student. Not just, um, you know, I'll do everything I can for you, but if you don't, you don't wanna do that, fine, you're on your own. At least like, find out what's, the problem is and do everything I can. Love your students, I think was a term that was, uh, was, uh, mentioned. And I think that's great. And I think we have a ton of teachers here that, that operate that way, but, you know, we're gonna avoid, you know, the thing where you commit to loan. But, you know, we ought to avoid, you know, the thing where you commit to loan and brag about hoping the kids fail in your test because you made it so hard. You should be doing that with it. You should be trying to make sure everyone passes that test. Breakout session real quick. I went, one on, lack of a better one at that time for me was paperless meetings. I think we're well-intended, curved with our iPads. The thing that actually turned out to be a vendor there that has a software program for doing it, it's just a beefed-up thing that we do already with e-mail. I think we'll talk to the Aaron, he could do some of those things just by, you know, using Google Docs, whatever programs or apps that we have. So things like putting links in right into what we get here that we can go in and help real quick for one. I always go to a law update that pertains to an area of interest of mine, not only my career, but also with the schools. I think some people would like to be through that one. First part was basically on things that changed with the last budget that passed. A lot of other things, things we were very familiar with. Second half was about the Affordable Care Act. And, you know, it just boggles my mind, the depth of knowledge that attorneys and health professionals have to have to understand it. And it boggles my mind that anybody can form any type of opinion, pro or con, on the Affordable Care Act unless you are an attorney or healthcare professional that spent hours and hours researching and stuff. Because it's just so complicated that, you know, listening to radio commentators or people on the street, you just don't, you just can't understand it. It's virtually impossible. And then the session on the common court, because I obviously, I wanted to get up to speed on that as much as possible. That's huge. And there's also, you know, the attacks to it that are coming. If you want to use that word from different angles, again, mostly in my opinion, people don't understand the purpose of it or what it is. That was put on by DPI, so obviously it was very pro Wisconsin common court standards. Very informative and another good management committee.
Excellent. Thanks. Next, election update. As you know, nobody turned in papers to run. So currently, we are in a write-in. And we could have a write-in atmosphere. And what that means is, is that whoever has the most votes in a write-in, I have to confirm that they're within the district and then offer them the position. And they can turn it down or not turn it down. You can also have official write-in votes or write-in that you can register as a write-in. And we haven't had anybody do that either. So just keep you up to date. I've had some people say, no, now I didn't have to get the signature. So I know this person is going to run. What I would just say is anybody interested that wants to, this is really, really important. And what I don't want to have happen is somebody just get votes and have no idea what the Board of Education is about, what the school district or Fondleac is. But if you know of anybody who is interested in doing it, they don't have to get any signatures anymore. But I would sure enjoy, you know, educating them and bringing information to anybody about what our meetings are, what the role of the board and how all that works. So just kind of a plug out there. If anybody knows anybody that still says maybe, maybe not, because it's April is when the election is. So. All right. EOL update. We had passed a while back about the most important thing, I believe, that our board that I get to help support doing, that's policy review and making. Richard Simmons and I have met already twice for about seven hours each time. We have done, we've gone through the 1,000s, the 2,000s, the 3,000s, the 4,000s. And we're going to be looking at doing students and also curriculum. And what it is, is the process has been great. They bring all the policies they have. We have our policies. Richard does the backgrounds, finds out where there's similarities, where there's differences. And then we look at recommendations. And I'm writing down the differences and what the changes that we're recommending. If there's anything big that changes, there really hasn't been anything really big. But I'm having all those changes. What will happen is we'll keep meeting probably for about two or three more times. Then what will happen is, is that there'll be a final rough draft, which then I'm going to bring to the board. We'll have like, I think, probably an April or May meeting where it'll just be that, a special one, where we'll just go through that and look at that, tell you what's the changes, what we're doing, how the policies look, what's different. And then make adjustments if we want to make adjustments. And then hopefully come June for our first may, maybe May or June, to say, hey, let's adopt these. If so, we have a major reading of them or we just, then we come back the second one. We say, okay, July 1st, there you go. So it's really been streamlined. Our process, one thing that I'm very thankful for is that you guys, the board has given the authority to go through these for myself, Maria and Richard and then the administrative team. And I really look forward to bringing this back to you and having our policies updated for your input for the first time since the 80s. And having them, it'll be digitalized, online, easy to follow, updatable. And it should be very exciting. So I'm happy with the process and that we're far ahead, already farther ahead than we've ever been policy-wise. All right. Budget workshop in date. Just wanted to throw this out. We have some very, very interesting times ahead of us. And that's looking at our debt, our debt levying, how much we owe on the high school to start to fall off, if you will, in the next few years. Also, we're looking at our levy and because of state aid. And that's one of the things, Pete, I appreciate you going to that. We are very unique. We're not like any municipality. We're not, education is very different in how it's funded. And it's funded based on many different factors. But the reality of it is, is that we're set with what we're able to levy and not levy based on what state aid comes in. And what we're looking at doing is, is in order to maintain the programs and also look at some of our alien buildings and grounds, we want to start to look at how can we maintain, not raise taxes, but how can we maintain levy and start to take care of some of these issues that we have if we are receiving more state aid. So Maria and I have already talked about, they're one of our financial consulting groups. And what we're looking forward to is in the next month or so, probably February will come and just kind of start thinking, I want to start setting the date for two things. Number one, a facilities audit group, kind of look at what we've got and kind of look at what we need in the future as far as buildings and kind of set our plan so that we can look at as things happen that we're ahead. And if we're smart, I believe, and if we want to save money in the long run and also invest in our district, we could possibly look at a November 2016 referenda for a building, referenda and updating different things, which would not increase the levy. We're looking at keeping our levy frozen. But when we have that debt drop off, it would change the, how we, what monies we have coming in. And what I'm going to suggest, hopefully we get, we want to get a lot of community participation so that people know exactly why we're doing what we are with levies, why we're looking at our buildings. We have friendship in ELC that are wiffle balls right now that we're band-aiding. We have different things also that we look at that could be needs coming up. We want to make sure that we're proactive and we invest our money in the best possible way, provide the best possible facilities and resources for our kids and community. So exciting things coming up. And we, there's no better time than now to start to plan. And that's going to be another great learning process about how we do budgeting and what our budget looks like and how our levy is and what that is. And then what we can do in order to maximize our resources for our kids and be proactive and best of best back in our community for our, for our kids and our people that we serve. So in February, we are February, but a real February meeting, I'll be throwing out some dates and then also asking the board for how do we want to get some community members to be on the facilities audit and planning team? And then also look at getting people to be involved with, how can we look at our finances and get people educated? So, I mean, it's going to take time, but I think that's the most important thing because if we are going to go to a referenda, I want people to know exactly what it is, how we're doing it, why we're doing it. And there is absolutely no surprise to anything.
So you're talking about two different groups? A facilities audit group and a long-range planning committee?
I think it'd be both. I think, I think within that long range, planning committee, part of that would be to give an audit of our facilities and see what recommendations come in on that. So I think it'd be a one-group thing and that we would educate, help people learn because it is very important that as we look at our levy, we do not have much, we're handcuffed. We're handcuffed. And one thing I know very much is that we have needs in our district. We have needs. We've had our budgets reduced significantly over the past three years. Our buildings, especially our elementary, our middle and high school, I think our grade there's some things that we might want to adjust. But I want to make sure that we're not throwing money away in energy or we look at our facilities that we have. At Friendship and ELC, a lot of those have just been added on. Not that they don't have great historical value, but when we look at attracting, retaining students and also providing that environment for them to best learn, I think if we can, without impacting our tax base and causing a rise in taxes, that we really seriously look at what we can do to be proactive.
And Aaron, can I just share the two consultants that we've been working with with Baird are actually, one is still a business manager, one they lead, and one is a former business manager for the Appleton School District. So they've both gone through this where their debt has been falling off and they knew that they had some facility needs. So what I'd like to do, and I've asked them already, is they will come in and they'll share their experiences and they'll share our budget model with everybody and show you exactly some different scenarios. If we do this, this is what the impact will be for the next five years and forward. We're actually budgeting out five years right now because we know we have, you know, we were talking about two-year budgeting. We're actually doing five years right now because we know we have a referendum coming up. So try to be proactive. And they are willing to come in and answer any questions that you have. They're the experts in that field.
Great. You said what, there's referendum coming up?
There could be.
Could be.
Right. But I, but I want to, but one thing is, is that that word scares people. And they think, oh, no, what do you want? But the bottom line is, is with our levy, thirty, a third of it is the debt for the high school, the building, about 33%, correct? Right around there? Yes, I don't, don't hold me on the word. But the thing is, is that when that, we have significant needs in our district. I don't know if you've been to ELC and FLC. We don't have the financial, I mean, ways, especially with what's currently going on. Our budgets are continually getting cut. We're not, I mean, this year, we're getting a little bit more, but the reality of it is, is that if there's a way that when we look forward is that we can maintain our tax levy without raising or lowering, because once, if we would go down 33% and let the debt fall off and not have a plan, that's necessary and that's what's great about this facility thing. Is it necessary? What do we need to do? It's not like, it's just convenient and we want to spend money to build something because we have the money to do it. But we could think proactively. Before, we would never have ever said, you know what, this community can handle more tax debt. And we could go ask for more. But what we know is, is that if we're, if we think and we're planning, instead of being reactive, we can be proactive. We can educate and say, you know what, through this facilities group and through talking about budgets and needs, that we could very well say, you know what, we think it's a good idea that if we go and educate the community in a high turnout year. That's one of the things about, what Maria and I have talked about, we want nothing hidden whatsoever. What's the best time to get the most people passionate out about a decision but a presidential election? And no haven't. And that's one of the things that if we're, we're going to know what our finances kind of look like unless we have significant impact like we had three years ago. But we're, we're going to plan that our models are going to be somewhat accurate. And we definitely know about our debt. We know how that's going to be looking. So we want to be proactive and say, you know what, this is the time to start talking about what do we need to best serve our kids and community? And how is that can impact us saving money too, in the long run? Because right now, we have, we're looking at a, over at FLC, $13,000 for a boil. ELC is gross. And I mean, and you look at, you look at the HVAC over at Friendship, there's four zones. And, you know, and you, even down to the part where we look in, one of the reasons why, and we don't have any more lice problems in other schools, but one of the things is that all of the hats are in hooks. We've all gone to school where there's hooks. I mean, if we would have separated puppies, I mean, these small things that can have a huge impact on the health and wellness of our, of our kids. You look at how our schools are designed. And, I mean, you look at the air circulation, you go into Friendship right now, in some of the fifth grade rooms, it's like an airplane crashed through the top because they have those huge fans. But that, that's what fits right now. And what I don't want to do, and what I, what I'm going to keep fighting on is we have, we have two things that we're looking at. One, one element is, is what are we keeping? What do we know we have to take care of? And if we have a problem, like at the high school, we had significant problems with HVAC control. So we invested $30,000 in upgrading that. And it's much better now. Not perfect, but much better now. These bleachers here, we know that Bass Allen and Horace Mann, this is going to be our middle high school complex for a few decades. We know that. So we take care of the problems here. But then we look at Friendship and Early Learning Center. How much do we want to invest in those, knowing that? What is our return on that? So when we say the referendum coming up, there is no referendum coming up. What there is, is education coming up. We want to get a group together. And what the idea would be is if it does make sense, that's something that we would look forward to do and we would do it in the most visible time so that even if it's a referendum that looks at, we have these three different things. Let's not all put them into one. We break them into three different things. One thing this community loves more than anything else is to know information and be treated honestly and upfront. And looking in the future, I mean, we want to start talking about this two and a half years ahead of time. And we think that's important, almost three years. So.
When is high school about? That around 18, isn't it? 2018?
Yeah, and get this, too. We have the opportunity, and Mike from Baird can help us out, can help show this a little bit more, Maria can help also. We have the opportunity to not increase taxes and pay it off early. Kind of like if you pay on your home, if you pay like an extra payment every year, you might save X amount in interest. We have an opportunity to actually pay it down a year early, which would save us about 50, 43 to $50,000 in interest. Which, which, to me, I mean, those things that we can do that are proactive, that, and not that, that we can save money, the better we're going to be. So it comes up then, but actually part of the plan we're looking at and why I want this group, this long-range financial and facilities plan, is so that we have a group that understands these things, that can help to, help to hone and get us to have that right message so that people know this is why it's happening. And this is what's going on. But we can actually save money by looking at those things and paying things off early, which would be very financially, I think.
Well, and that, there's a longer timeframe here, but I'm going to want to be able to see the effect of what it means going, having that fall off through the yearly cycle because, this is a very conservative community as far as referendums and spending. And, you know, there's going to be some initial, if it gets to that point, there's going to be some intermediate response that, you have the money, like you mentioned before. So why do you have to spend it right away? You know, pay your car loan off and use the car for a few more years, kind of thinking. So, but if there's some, we've got a really quirky finance law in the state, school finance law. So I would want to be able to see what that means by the debt going away to what we get with the state and things like that, and what does our revenue gap? Make sure that by not spending more, we're not hurting ourselves, which is, sounds backwards, but sometimes that happens too, I guess.
And I look at this as a business, too. Our, our school district, it's, we're a nonprofit, but we have to continually invest in it if we want to get the results that we want. For instance, our infrastructure with technology. We would not be able to be here to be able to do a lot of what we've done if we didn't invest and do leasing of technology eight years ago. But to have that forethought and invest into our, our buildings and our infrastructure was huge. And one of the things that I'm very cognizant of and working with Dave Mann, too, is that we band-aid things and we, our energy and maintenance of some of our facilities are counterproductive to being, I think, we just have to do it because we don't have any other choice right now. But if we did have that opportunity, what could that mean and what would that look like? And what would that save us and what would that give to our kids and community? But also knowing that, hey, everybody, if the debt's gone, your levy goes from $9.74 as your bill rate down to whatever. Well, all that stuff will be out there. And then we'll have to, and we'll have to communicate. And if we can communicate and convince people that it is a good investment. And that's one thing that I hope we start to hear more and more. We always hear about spending, spending. And that's one thing that currently I hear with our state government, it's all about spending, spending, cut spending, 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 spending. What I'm hoping we can get into, especially in our infrastructure, and if you want to drive around on roads, I can only imagine what the village and our state's going to have to do now with this weather we've had, about the cracking. I mean, our infrastructure is falling apart. falling apart, we need those finances to invest in that. And when I look at education, that's the same thing. We have different infrastructures that, when things are asking for that, we need to invest in. So when we look at redoing a road in the city, we're not looking at spending money, we're looking at investing that money into that infrastructure. And that's what I hope as we go through with this plan and talk to people, we can start to have a conversation about how are we going to invest in our kids? How are we going to invest in our community? How are we going to invest, not how are we going to spend? Because really it's about the investment part. And that's a different mindset and I know what you said about the conservativeness of North Finalak. And it is, I mean, if you can, you know, take that used car and now drive it for another ten years, it was good enough for me, it can be good enough for the kids, why do we have to invest? I just want to make sure that we do our due diligence and I bring you the recommendations with the group of what we think would be best to help our district flourish and best serve our kids. It'll be fun. It'll be fun to have that communication, get that information and to get the people to know truly what's going on. All right. So February, be ready. If you get that, I'm going to want some guidance from the board. How do we go about doing that? I know that there's some people who probably really like to be part of that process and that's great. And, but also, you know, what does that look like? How do we meet? What do we want to do? Because this is heavy duty stuff. It's like our, our world wants simple answers for complicated problems. And this idea of facilities and finances in schools is very, there's a lot of integral things going on. So on a group that can get together and really learn and understand that, because it's going to take a depth of understanding to make the right decision. All right? So all I have, anything that you guys question about the administrative reports?
Any questions? All right. Seeing that moving on. Any other?
Um, I think yesterday when we were outside and I'm like, wow, this is awesome, so warm, you know, and it was what, nine? But as the sun was out, people were walking their dogs, I think I saw some people running in shorts. Yeah, hopefully we'll get there. But once again, I just want to thank you for the flexibility. I didn't, I didn't think it would be appropriate to have a meeting when schools canceled and so more people if they want to come could get here. So thank you very much.
All right. Moving on, under new business, number one, two, resolution to modify the term eligible employee for the flexible benefit plan. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hock.
This is pretty much, asking doesn't exist anymore, so this is just something that we have to change in order to have a flex benefit. It doesn't cost anything, it's just something that needs to be done.
Any questions? Seeing number one.
Duffy?
Yes.
Hock, yes.
Chisholm? Yes.
Pila?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is approved co-op with St. Mary's Springs and Oakfield for boys soccer for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. See? I'll make the motion. Second that. Discussion.
Uh, we're very, in our district, we want to make sure to provide as many opportunities we can without hurting ourselves. Kyle Krieger came to Mike and said, hey, what do you think about tennis? Because they, they had a tennis team, but they don't have quite enough to have a tennis team and we found some very good success in our co-ops with the Springs recently and I'm going to be asking, breaking forward and recommending another one in a second. So Mike put out a sign up, who's interested in tennis. Eleven girls at the high school signed up, not one of them played volleyball. Not one of them was in cross country. That was my only concern, are we going to start to deplete volleyball or cross country? Not one of them on that list was. Now, if we pass this co-op and two girls do it, well, there's two opportunities that they would have never had. If nobody does it, as in hockey, all of a sudden then, now that we have more in hockey, we go back to the co-op, it isn't there. It only will cost us as we use it. So I would, I highly recommend this as another opportunity for our kids to have a chance to play something that they love. And currently, right now, just give that opportunity.
Just a question, just, I'm guessing maybe the whole school?
Yes.
What do they practice with the, I mean, that stuff?
No.
Okay.
No. And what we did is we sent these in, but I called Deb Hauser, it was all due on the thirty-first, but nothing's official until we sent it, did the copied ones. So I, this is still, nothing's a done deal. I just think if we don't hurt ourselves and we give more opportunities, I don't see how it can be, I, I very much, I highly suggest or recommend.
So the eleven girls that signed up were North Finalak students?
Yes.
What was the interest to St. Mary's Springs?
No idea. But Kyle being the one who, they have the coach and everything, I'm guessing they have an interest, otherwise you wouldn't have asked us to do it, so.
This is really an opposite situation than this one we've been doing with soccer where we don't have the team at all, so for them.
Yeah.
We're giving that opportunity, so it's the only reason why we weren't doing this.
We just need a swimming co-op in the fall. If we could get something in the winter for girls besides basketball and dance, I mean, that's, when we look at, there just isn't those options for the girls that we have, for the guys, if we could find that. And Mike, one of the things Mike does great is tries to find those opportunities for our kids and this I think would be another shot.
What about the Title IX numbers? Is that, or do you maybe think of that as a balance out if we're adding a girls team or we...
We've never really had any problems with that per se. And, and as earlier was stated, numbers of students in sports, it's not at our school that are dropping, only it's all over the place. But I think this, getting kids involved in anything, and if these girls wouldn't have been involved, period, something in the fall, now you got a shot. So, but as far as Title IX goes, I don't, I don't have any fears and as we look at it, we've never had any questions. Only thing we did have a question about and there was some, some concern about having equal opportunity for students with disabilities. But we're, we make sure that we include and have the opportunity for kids with disabilities to be involved in all sports. That was something that came this, this summer that we're very much aware of.
Any other questions? Seeing number one.
Pila?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Hack, yes? Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is approved co-op with St. Mary's Springs and Oakfield for boys soccer for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. See? I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Second by...
We had, we had talked about this earlier, Mike's talked with Coach Hungerford and Kyle Krieger, they have something called American football at St. Mary's Springs, I don't know if you've heard about that. But what's happening, never seen that with the Springs in their soccer program, is they're having students and I think students that say they'd rather be on football and not play at all and be part of a winning team. And they're seeing their numbers of soccer drop. And right now they're looking at between six and ten people to play soccer. Now soccer's a very different sport than football. The Springs has, has had a history of successful soccer programs, but right now they're looking at not being able to have a soccer team. Working, Mike working with Kyle, we already co-op with Oakfield, we are the whole school there. We would have, as Donovan had stated, or as Mike had, I was talking to Mike, we'd have twelve, and I'd say to you in here, we'd have about twelve kids, which means that soccer takes eleven. So you add the Springs to that and it looks like we get anywhere from six to ten from St. Mary's Springs. Now we're looking at a real, a real good opportunity for a team to be successful. We would be the whole school and with us being the whole school, we would, we're work out the games, have a beautiful facility at the Smith Field, so we, excuse me, host some of the games they would, but practice, we'd work out the practice thing also, but I think the majority would be, would be here, the games we'd work out. What would happen right now is that there is a St. Mary's Springs soccer schedule for next fall. What would happen is that would just go away, so those teams then who were playing the Springs would no longer have that schedule. Springs would then come on and follow our schedule. We maintain the O's because it's Orioles, Oakfield, now the S would be Springs. So we maintain that, the nickname of the O's, the S there. And one of the things, as I said earlier, about kids wanting to be part of a winning program, we struggle in a lot of our sports of soccer where we have low participation because we have freshmen playing, with freshman bodies playing with young adults and that causes not to have success. And when we don't see success in the ability to schedule some of these JV games or be able to sub out, I mean, even if we have younger players, we don't have a JV team. In a high school soccer, you could sub out and find a lot more success. So I think this is another opportunity with St. Mary's Springs that we could co-op and I think this would be something that would help our kids tremendously to get those six, ten, you know, male athletes from the Springs that know soccer, that could play soccer, that can help us get better. And that's exactly what we got when we had Oakfield join us with girls too. We had just enough for that, for girls, but now with Oakfield, they bring some skillset too, make us even better. So I highly recommend approval.
So we're still be on the verge of not having a JV for men?
Well, we don't have JV.
Well, we don't have, no, but I mean, read this, it says, if we do this, we'll be able to have a JV, but numbers wise...
We may, may not. What happens with soccer is that they schedule JV, it's not like in old days how you'd have a varsity JV, the JV would play the same day the varsity. What they do is they look at numbers and they look at our conference or around and we might have three JV games or four JV games. Or there might be a tournament that, that's a JV tournament where maybe some, maybe we send thirteen guys there, six of them play varsity too, but they're freshmen. So it would allow us to have that opportunity. What, if we only had twelve players, we wouldn't be, I, I, we were an injury or two or concussion away from not being able to have a team. And really those twelve, you can't get better if you're out there, you know, for that nine or eighty, ninety minutes without substitutes, plus practice is difficult. So this gives us numbers, once again, it would provide a better opportunity for our kids and, you know, it's a two-year thing, so if it's not working after two years, or hopefully what, what could happen is we can see great success, then all of a sudden the Springs, you know, we might have thirty kids, now all of a sudden after two years, hey, the flyover might say, no guys, you're too much of a juggernaut, right? Be a juggernaut, but, yeah, split up. So, but at least this would allow us to continue to move forward with numbers to be, to plan on success. If we only had twelve guys, I don't think we'd find much success at all. Then we can see people start to even drop from there.
Does the increase cost in this limited just transportation?
Uh, some, it actually decreases our cost because we can charge, we charge per member from the Springs too. So it actually, it's, it won't cost us any more money. Whatever, whatever it costs, like we're going to have a bus anyways. And what we do right now is we go to Oakfield, pick them up and then go to the game where the bus goes to Oakfield and gets us. We just add that one in there. Whatever the costs are, we just divide out and from, what it comes down to is scale. Like, like we were, if we're going to pay our coach, you know, two grand, now we take that two grand and spread that out over, you know, thirteen kids, so instead of us paying the whole thing, we'd actually get revenue coming in based on the per player. So it won't cost us more money.
Kids or bus both back and forth for practice?
No, they find their own, their own way.
Was the twelve included incoming eight players?
From what the prediction was, yes. There was a prediction that we were going to lose, I think, is, don't, that we're losing like five and we're getting like four or something. But that's what Mike had said, the prediction was.
I've always been, you know, favored this as long as we keep monitoring the balance there between, so that at some point if it gets out of whack, we're not, you know, like we're fine, like kids aren't getting squeezed out because Springs might be growing it forward where their kids are interested and we're not, you know, that kind of thing. And I'm sure you're, and you've said that in the past, I'm doing, looking at that and stuff, so.
And what we love, and with hockey, hockey's hockey, we got those three guys that are playing that. I mean, they're always going to be the host of that, but I, I really, with having Mike running our athletic department, I feel very confident with us being the whole school because then we control, it's almost like with Damaris and Kathy Hayes, our Debbie, they have a deal with Campbell Sport, they're our employees. It's just that we share them based on, but they're our employees. This is still our team, we're still the host for this, but we're providing that service. So we have control over the ref, or over the coach, we have control over the scheduling, all that stuff. Mike will work with the different schools, make sure it works out, but we still control. We're at girls tennis, we wouldn't, but it's all girls tennis.
All right, any other questions? Seeing number one.
Duffy?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Hock, yes. Pila?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is approved, Kaila Peter, made of seventh grade volleyball coach. I'll make the motion. Hock?
I'll second.
Second by...
This is fulfilling. We have one more need for coaching after this, JV softball. But Kayla's done a great job as our Horace Mann High School Secretary, did a great job assisting with varsity. She'll be able to work with Coach Yaki and our team. She also has recruited a volunteer assistant who worked with the varsity for many years, her father, can help out, but she can't make it, so we're kind of get it, we're almost like Anthony and his dad kind of thing going on, you know, who's really doing all the co, that's all right, but it works out. Also, one thing is that I may come to the board and ask for an additional coach for seventh grade to help. We currently have thirty-five seventh graders signed up to do volleyball, which is ridiculous as far as how you could get that much attention and work in there. So with that much, we might look at, I'll work with Mike to maybe add this year another help, although it wasn't like we had people falling out of, coming out of the woodwork to fill this position. So very happy that Kayla's decided to do this, she's an incredible asset to our district and working with Matt Yanki, our eighth grade coach, I think will do a great job.
Any questions? Seeing number one.
Hock, yes. Pila?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is approved, resolution to not have limitations on all kinds of students for open enrollment. I'll make the motion. Pila, second.
I don't really know why they have this, but it came up in, in January that we had to talk about this, about setting limits. I think Kimberly might and has policies to set limits of how many kids can come in and out. We are seeing a positive as far as the number of students opening and rolling in, we are seeing significant increase in the financial resources coming in from open enrollment. So we are a destination district, but I don't think we're close yet to having all of our seats filled. I think we can still keep providing more and being able to take the resources and the students and help them learn. So I just recommend, and they're really, this would just be noted in the meetings that we voted or that the board approved that we won't have limitations. The only way you will ever see a limitation currently that I see, and it's not really a limitation, what it is, is that if we have a special ed student that comes into our district and that special ed student needs to have a lot of supervision or needs to have some high-cost care, we price up what that student costs and then we tell that to the district. We have Finalak, Oakfield, and Myra. So let's say student X would cost us twenty thousand dollars to educate because they need an instructional aid, they need these other services, it would cost us twenty thousand dollars to educate this student. Now, if they were our student, we wouldn't have a choice and we'd have to file that IP and we'd pay for that. But if we're going to accept them in open enrollment, we cost that out, Debbie does a great job at that with Maria, send that to the district where they're coming from. That district then says, you know, we can do it for less expensive here. And we're going to deny that, they're going to come to school here, they'll have a program, we can meet their IP, but it's going to be less expensive. And normally that happens with the Finalak, if you will, where we don't have like isolated in classrooms per se and pull-out programs where Finalak does. So for us to get all these special services for this child and we don't have, we don't have the, the size so that we can serve four or five kids, because we don't have four or five kids with that need here, but Finalak they would, so just because of that scale, they can afford to do things differently. So this isn't saying we're not taking a student or taking a student, that's something that with special ed, that, that gets costed out. And really, if we have too many students at the high school that are special ed in need, we might have a new special ed student come in and then what I'll tell the Debbie we might have a new special ed student come in, and then what I'll tell the Debbie is that we have two, our caseloads are overwhelmed, so we'd have to hire a new teacher. So then what we would do is we would cost out hiring that new teacher to that district. So then the district would say, well, of course, we're not gonna do that, because we can do it here, absorb them in a class or a program that already exists. So what this is saying, and what I'm asking the board, recommending the board approves, is that in the minutes, it just reflects that there's a vote that we're limiting open enrollment numbers. That.
Where does the suggestion that we have to have a resolution, one way or the other, come from?
State, DPI.
DPI is saying that we have to address this.
With, this being new to me, I did a Google thing quick, and it caught a couple of news articles from other districts that had, you know, been reported in their local paper, and I think one of them, I forget the district, did the same thing we're doing, Whitewater was another district that limited special education. The art, the reporter didn't get into what the discussion was, or why, I mean, the news article, they just did that.
Speech therapist shortage is probably one of the reasons. A lot of districts have, have denied special ed and open enrollment, because speech therapists, even if you get them, you can't find therapists to hire, and so there was a shortage nationally, and that was part of that trend.
Yeah, like I said, it gave no rationale, really, you know, what their situation is, their, you know, incoming district or outgoing district as far as students, if they didn't have room or whatever, but I, yeah. So I really couldn't find anything specifically why somebody would put a limit on something, you know, plus, I, I don't know.
I think it's more of the Kimberly model. What, what Kimberly does is they're overwhelmed with Kakana, Little Shoot, Green Bay, all the school districts around. They're a magnet, and they have at their elementary schools, that if they were to take more, it's almost like the co-op. You know, they might say, okay, we're only gonna have X amount, and you have to apply, and there's a random drawing fee to get in, but once you get in, if you have a legacy, a sibling, you can get in, because they're just, they're overwhelmed, they just can't afford it to do it, because it would be a bit, uh, uh, it would cost them more money. So I think that's the only reason I can think of. And I also think that we would get into a very dicey conversation where if we set a limit, now who comes in and who doesn't, and how does that run, and is that fair and equitable? Are we discriminating? And currently, we have enough room, and, and what we see with our open enrollment, they actually add value to our students that we have here, and also help us financially too.
Well, I can certainly see that, you know, there's advantage for students who open enrollment to the district because of the financial aspect of it, right? But I, I remain concerned that students that come that have special needs, that we are really understanding what those needs are, and making sure that we ask ourselves the question, can we support this student in addition to everybody that we already have?
Maybe so.
We have, in the past, we just, before, you know, we were here, there was a student that tried to apply to us that needed nursing services five days a week. Don't have that.
We have a student, if we have a student, for instance, um, let's take, I think, a type of student, we'll just, I'll throw, an EBD student, who very much struggles within a normal classroom and causes problems and issues. Might do something stupid like, you know, putting things in microwaves or something, where they're not allowed to be within that environment. So what we would do is, since we don't have a pull-out program, we would say, okay, that student is going to be recommended if they stay in our district, we, if they're one of our students, we have, need an alternative plan for them, so they're, we're going to, we're gonna send that child to Amity and pay C C six for that child. Now, that child going to Amity might cost us twenty-five thousand dollars. So with that district, if we were to say, you're gonna have that student come here, they wanna come here because they think we're easier, and now they can manipulate the system more here, that doesn't happen. We'll say, hey, if that student comes here, and they're in a self-contained, it's in their IP, our self-contained is this option. Hey, home district, this is what it would cost you. And that's really, that's what it really comes down to. We're not trying to, we do not try to get students to come here by making things easier or less easy. The IP is IP, it's a legal document, and we follow what that is. And we've had that a couple of times, where some families wanted to come in and say, you know what, my kid's in this pull-out program in whatever district, and I want them there because you're fully inclusive. They come in, they look at the IP, and it's like, well, your child's not gonna come into this environment, because it's not gonna be conducive, or file that IP, so we're going to, this is what, this is what it would cost us to educate your child, because we would use different services. And I think that's sometimes a misunderstood fact about open enrollment, and even with educating, and there's some students, parents, but we got this one parent who is gonna open enrollment, and if FALAC, and this parent wants X, Y, and Z. Well, the IP doesn't say they should get X, Y, and this is what they want, it's not what their child needs. So we offer this and then price this out. Well, all of a sudden, if they don't like what the, the district, the home district has to say, they say, well, then we're moving into our FALAC, and you're gonna have to do what we tell you. And the reality of it is, we'll come to our FALAC, that IP team gets together, which the family is a very big part of, and we'll work through a solution, which will probably be the same solution that we had, but now, since they live here, we're going to have to get the resources for them within that. So we make sure that we follow the law, and make sure, do everything we can to lessen the impact on our students. You'll see also, and I'm excited for the next few months, Debbie and Melanie will talk about the set room, which is a new program that we have at Friendship Learning Center, to help students that are struggling in the classroom in early childhood, first, second, third grade with behavior, and this is something that we addressed earlier, where now they learn those skills, so they're not a hundred percent, they have to earn and show that they have the skills to get in there, and if they're not successful, then they come back. It's more of a, a release and remediation, not for math and reading, but remediation for behavior. But they need more time to learn that. So Tiffany Torres has done phenomenal job organizing that, and I think it'll help a regular ed and special ed population.
Any other questions? Single, roll call.
Pila?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Hot, yes, and Chizov?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is approved in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, March by High School Board description.
Second.
Actually, that, uh, the deep freeze gave us a little time, so you had an opportunity to look at this and go through a little more, so that should probably help with the conversation, but I'll turn it over to Samantha and, you know, just explain some of the differences and additions.
Sure. I'm excited about our new book. I mean, every year we try to evolve and make some changes, and, you know, our hope is every year that seniors are gonna say to us, oh, wish we would've had this, and, you know, heard that from a couple of people. Erin and Linda worked together to do some of the formatting, so huge thank you to them. We've added the career pathway pages, you'll see those mainly at the back. And then really tried to challenge, you know, each department to look at, you know, hey, where, where are the, the needs of our students? What's working? Is there anything that, that we're not offering? And, and really had some people step up. If you wanna go to, so the first one, math is, one of the things that we discovered is, we had, years ago, had personal finance that was taught in business, and then the Technical College came to us and said, hey, this can be articulated, if it's in your math department, so we made the switch, now it's kind of flip-flopped. But really in talking to MPTC, they shared with us that a lot of students who go to MPTC need to either have a class called College Mathematics, or the transition, or Technical Math One or Technical Math Two. So we said, well, you know what, this is a lot smarter for us to articulate that class, offer students the ability then to not only get dual credit, but to help, help them in their programs that they're taking the tech. So next year, we have changed and have gotten rid of, at least in the math department, personal finance, that's actually going back into the business department as a business or elective course, and they're offering the College Mathematics course. It's kind of a taste of all the areas to help those students transition from high school to Technical College. Really excited this semester. Dan is kind of our, our guinea pig in math, and is teaching a statistics, statistics course online. So students are just meeting with him here or there, and they're using the Schoolology website. But continuing that, I just wanted to share that that's, I, I think something for us to continue to look at is some courses that are online. The next thing then that was change, science took a look at and said, you know, we like astronomy, but we really would like to change it to more geology. We are continuing to work as nine through twelve with next-generation science standards, and work with Melanie to try to find out, you know, where some of our gaps are and how to, to look at that. Geology would be an elective course, so we're still trying to look at ways to incorporate some of the earth and, and other standards that we need to do in, in science, but geology will replace astronomy. English, we had had some issues before, we had taught drama, we have journalism, and sometimes we run into the situations that colleges will say, hey, that's okay for elective credit, but it's not going to be guaranteed for English credit. So Heidi and Jenny would be put in the position of saying to kids, great if you're gonna take drama, but you need to sign up for a different English class as well. So Katie Crabbe really did her research and submitted proposals to several universities, has it in writing from them, that the classes changed to dramatic literature, and we're being told at this point that they will accept that. So she's really kind of changed that to try to meet some of the needs. And then what we also looked at, our CAP classes have been well-received, kids really like them, they work with Jim, and do a great job. Katie attended the AP workshop last summer, and we felt that second semester, senior year, we had a little bit of a gap there. So Katie has added the AP language, which you'll see at the end. It's going to be senior-level course, and it is going to be offered second semester only. We felt, again, that that really helped kind of complete the CAP classes for students, and then offer another alternative for them to have some dual-credit opportunities in AP as well. The other thing that is always, or also added, excuse me, is the contemporary literature. And English really brought this forward and said, hey, you know what, we've taken a review of the standards, and this is something that, you know, we know that it's elective, but we really feel that this is a strong course to offer. Again, it was approved by the colleges as a college prep course.
And one of the things, just to, the CAP classes, articulating with UW Oshkosh, so students actually get UW Oshkosh credit to get an ID to hold nine yards. Or AP, that's advanced placement, the students would take the class, in order to get college credit, they'd have to take a test in May in order to earn that credit. So we have in our district, we have gone more towards articulation in the CAP classes, because we know that if they get a C or above, and then our, our, like, Jim Dietert, and then Jeff Strots in, in math, they actually go through that class, there is no high-stakes test at the end, but being exposed to that, those, those educators are sanctioned, if you will, or credited by UW Oshkosh. So when you see that, say, why don't we have AP, where's our advanced stuff? We do, but it's, but we're more invested in the, in the, in the CAP classes, the cooperatives with UW Oshkosh in articulation than we are at AP right now, but we're getting into both.
Yeah, we really felt that AP was important though, because, and probably some of you have been through this, when kids are applying for scholarships, when they're applying for, you know, different things, applications to university, they flat out ask you, you know, what are you taking for honors courses, what are you taking for AP? Often, they're not even listing CAP. So our, our students are able to include CAP, but having AP opportunities is really important, we felt, for them. The other thing too, that we, that I just want to point out, students can choose to take the AP course and not the AP test. You know, that's again, you know, up to them when they want to, because one of the things that is, is new this year, you know, right or wrong, is both at the Technical College and the UW system, if someone is taking a class for dual credit and it does not go well, it can potentially impact their financial aid in the future. So all of our parents get notified of that. You know, for example, you know, right now, this year, in personal finance, if those students say, yeah, yeah, you know, sign me up for the articulation of MPTC, and, and they do poorly, and they earn a D, that could, two years down the road, impact their financial aid, right or wrong. Again, it's just the way the law on this changes.
We want in basketball, by the way. Sixteen, sixteen.
What?
We want in basketball.
Oh, okay, okay.
With the AP class, do we follow the national, or whatever it is, the standard or curriculum for the AP?
You have to, absolutely, to publish that. Katie had to, in order to propose a class next year, she has a date that she has to follow to submit her curriculum and syllabus, and then a year ahead, telling all, or the same thing for the AP government class. Both of them had to attended, which they did, the Southern Institute for AP. Actually, they're very strict that way. Um, history, again, the, the only class that was, was changed is we felt that our students will all take the American Government and Family Life Junior Year, but students will then have an opportunity, senior year, to take the AP United States Government and Political State Local Government Class. So that is the only change in that department. This year, as you remember, we added Intro to Criminal Justice, and that's been a huge success. We've had thirty-one students in that, in that class, so they're well. Fayed, had made several changes in the past couple of years, so they're really, you know, other than just wording changes done in there. Foreign language, only thing that we wanted to make sure that students aware is, is two things. We wanted to make sure that our native speakers, we were really making the correct placement, because sometimes that's difficult, and so for them to meet with the, one of the Spanish instructors to help with that. And then we also added a little paragraph, you see, about the college placement testing. You know, many of us, myself included, have, have, had the opportunity to, you know, take that placement test for college, earn retroactive credits, and it's a huge advantage to scheduling when you're a freshman. So wanted to make sure that that was in there. Art, just a couple of word changes, the same for band and choir. I think a lot of things that our course description will put, it said chorus, and Anthony wanted to make sure it said choir. Family consumer ed, Jill's just doing a phenomenal job for us in trying to make sure that our students have every opportunity, again, for things like certificates, articulation, you name it. So we did have a class that we call Pro Start, it is now actually called Food Science, or Food Service, excuse me. And again, this is really that culinary, culinary course. The, the reason that Erin and I are kind of going down that road of, of the charter school, et cetera, is Jill has just, again, done a phenomenal job, she is having conversations with Todd to say, hey, you know what, if we are able to open this cafe through Pro Start in Culinary Arts, you know, we would love for your, your business class to do the marketing for us, and hey, Doug, would you work with us, that you could be our accountants and all that, so we can kind of really do some cross-curricular. Jana, we get to the special ed, Liz Forbes, who we also run our school, would you work with us and students to get the employability skills and to do, you know, some of the front-of-house, you know, serving and support opportunities? But she's just really bringing a great team of people together to, you know, support, you know, her vision. Her big thing, you know, as well, as should be in the culinary arts, is she wants to make sure that our students have every opportunity to be marketable. So these certificates, she's worked with DPI and got approved for the childcare class, working with children that we have, you know, along with their articulation at MPTC, again, just about, hey, one of the best opportunities for our kids in, in these classes. And you'll see several of these, again, are articulated with MPTC for that dual-credit opportunity.
She's also catalysting some of our other teachers with those career pathway classes to say, hey, let's up our game and make sure that if we're gonna be teaching, those kids can get those credits for MPTC also.
Absolutely. Tech ed really worked, well, the counselors, myself, and then Tom and Joe and Mike all talked about, you know, what do we see, what's working, what's not. I'll be honest, you know, Erin knows it's, it's a little bit difficult not knowing who's gonna come into that position and trying, you know, sometimes you have a person come in who's like, hey, this is my background, I'd love to see this class, you know, changed or offered, but really relied on the expertise of Joe and Mike and Tom, and, you know, to take a look at what was working, what was not. So we made some word changes, we did as a group, make the decision, we have Woods One right now that is a semester course, and Woods Two that is a year, they really felt, you know, to really work on not only cabinetry, wood skills, to make Woods One a year-long course. Then as a department, we actually got rid of the Intro to Building Trades, just felt that, that was not, just wasn't working, wasn't in our program. As we've all talked, we are, are not gonna be in the home building business in the future, but are really looking for different partnerships, and, you know, mainly that ability for those kids to earn that skill. So maybe doing some, you know, mock setups in the classroom, you know, building a wall, you know, list goes on, but it may not be, again, building home. Maybe there's some partnerships out there that we can find as well. So we'll continue with building, construction, and maintenance of the Intro Building Class we have gotten rid of.
And one of, just feeding off of that, talking about the right people, I don't think it's, it'd be wise, but I don't wanna recommend to the board, until we know who we have and what their skillset is, for our kids, even with, with clarity care, when Jim was there, he, he understood those different processes. As much as it'd be a great thing, we have a huge history of building trades in our community, if we don't have that right person that we can count on, that we trust, that we can rely on, I think we're asking for some significant problems out there. And, and I think that we, we need to, before we do anymore, to make sure we have that right person in place.
And then the two other changes, one we're excited about, we are offering a class called Home Maintenance. And, you know, the hope there again was, you know, really to give some of our kids, you know, males, females, you know, kids who have experience, kids who don't, you know, a lot of those basic skills, so that when, when they are going out either into, you know, their own home, or apartment, or you name it, or down the road, that they have some of those skills that many of us, including myself, wish we had. or you name it, or down the road, that they have some of those skills that many of us, including myself, wish we had. So, you know, one of the things, for example, that when Joe and I talked about, you know, they'll have kids do some of the taping and mudding on a wall and then Joe may come over and punch a hole in it. "All right, how do we fix it?" Like, "Darn, I need that." You know, and some of those simple electrical things, some of the simple plumbing things so that, you know, let's face it, it could help, you know, save our kids and families and some money. And many of us wish, you know, we would have these skills.
I'd sneak a dream.
Yeah.
Yes.
Or even just go to the, get your oil changed and be smart about answering the questions. So, my wife says she doesn't get 15, 20 extra dollars for stuff she never needed because she gets flustered. And one question should, should be looked for, the basic things.
And then with the addition of our names of the Project Lead the Way classes, we had a class that we called Principles of Engineering. Obviously, we need to change that. So, Tom, in talking with them, we have changed that to Technical Problem Solvers for Engineering, TPSC. So, there it is. And then obviously, we put in on the next page, introduction of Project Lead the Way and the foundation courses, et cetera.
Sir, did you, I see it in the listing here, you say Building, Construction and Maintenance is out?
No.
No, the Intro to Building Trades is out. We had, you know, almost kind of a three-hour block. We had the two classes that were Building Trades and we actually had Intro to Building Trades, which sometimes honestly, those kids still ended up with time at the house. And it just, you know, this year, in talking with Joe and Mike, not working. They would rather keep the two hours for, you know, Building Trades and dump that other hour. So, the semester class, the Home Maintenance class is new. It's going to be a second semester class. Business, really trying to, you know, push for, you know, continued articulation with MPTC and looking at these classes. And the only change here is the Personal Finance Management class that will come into play in business.
I think within a year, we're going to see some significant changes in as far as like what's offered in business with combining, you know, Microsoft Suite instead of just individual ones. Also, look at web design, look at some things that are, you know, gaming design, all those different things that, once again, Todd and Doug, it's about them driving that bus. So, I look, they're making some strides, I think, with articulation that Jill's working with them to do. I think it's going to be, we're going to see even more evolution. So, we really need that, we need to get our business really rocking and rolling.
And we have it new in here and some of that was our employee marketing, but it's called Business Management, Food and Retail. We've offered the school store, the retail management, and unfortunately, the past four years, we struggled to run that class, for whatever reason. So, we are trying and that's where Jill's done a great job at saying to Todd, "Hey, how about looking at getting kids the certificate through the DPI for employabilities? You know, will this help, you know, withdraw?" And she's willing to kind of partner with him on some things with school store. And, you know, going back to like people, we talked about that 3D printer. One of the things that I thought was really cool, being from Manitowoc, the girl that I sat next to had a really cool phone case that the kids had created from the 3D printer and it had the color of the ship on it. And I said to her, "Wow, you know, where'd you get that?" And she said, "Our kids made it." So, you know, I kind of went right away, went to Todd and said, "Wouldn't this be cool to have in our school store? You know, and kids would, you know, learn this from the 3D printer and that." So, yeah, we just need to continue to think outside the box for them. I think those are all, you know, major changes. Just at the end, like, you know, I said, we're really trying to focus on the career clusters and pathways for students, just to give them a better understanding. You know, when we met with the art department, for example, I think sometimes students may love art, they just don't know what are the jobs out there, you know, if I like art, what can I go into? And so, we want to continue to do a better job of letting them know some of those methods.
And thank you to Campbell's Port. We got, for each one of those career pathways, as you go into it, it explains more what that means. And Samantha was great to find that. And then we got these out of time where Samantha said, "Let's get them in there." We didn't have much time to format, but we are going to get, these are really a great addition that I think can help even borns, adults, like teachers, kind of get that whole idea of career pathway. So, good job, thanks for putting those in.
Any questions? Single roll call.
Duffy?
Yes.
Pila?
Yes.
Chizil?
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is closed session. Public motion to go to closed session. Item one, discussion, possible purchase of property pursuant to state statute 925, Form 1, Form E. Second item, discuss or present evaluation of contract pursuant to state statute 925, Form 1, Form C. Second.
Second.
Second by Pila. Okay, any discussion, single roll call?
Do you guys have meaning?